All right, we have all the city council meeting to order. We're a little bit late at 6:16 on Monday, February 9th. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Ms. Poplar?
Present.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Freeman?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Ms. Galloway's absent. Ms. Van Buren?
Present.
Mr. Kincaid?
Present.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Galloway did text me. She thought she was going to be back in town in time for tonight's meeting, but she was not able to make it, so that is why she is not here. Uh, can we do the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Davis?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
I would move that we approve the minutes with corrections.
Support. Been moved by Councilman Mays, supported by Councilman Kincaid. Do you have a specific correction, Councilman?
No, I just did that as a safeguard. I haven't reviewed them yet, so I would move them with any necessary corrections.
Anybody have any corrections? All right, can we have roll?
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no to approve the minutes.
Next item on the agenda is a special order requested by emergency manager Ambrose, Mr. Ambrose. Do you have three minutes? I think that's our...
That's more than enough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council members. Just I wanted to give you a brief update. We are moving toward transition as we've been talking. And as I look back at the activities over the last several weeks, months, we're making a lot of progress. Council's adopted a capital improvement plan. They've adopted a series of financial ordinances. You've reviewed the FY14 audit. This month begins council meetings twice per month with committees meeting once per month. You'll be voting tonight on a strategic, on the vision, mission, and goals for an updated strategic plan, part of which is a result of what I thought was a very excellent workshop on January the 28th. And as we talked to in the committee as a whole earlier, there are training opportunities, and I can tell that council members are all pursuing that. So I think we're all moving in the direction it want to go, and I wanted to say thank you for your cooperation. One other issue, as you know, we issued in our FPE about two weeks ago to bring in an expert water team consulting team to help ensure we're doing everything we can to make sure that Flint's water continues to be safe. That team will be here beginning tomorrow. It will be here probably for a week to 10 days. We are planning to update the Public Works Committee at their next regular scheduled meeting on Wednesday, February the 18th. By then they will have been on the ground, had an opportunity to assess, and hopefully we'll be able to give you a good report. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mays?
Mr. President, through you to Mr. Ambrose. Mr. Ambrose, so you say that's the one persons who answered the request for proposal?
That's correct.
Do we know their name?
Company's name is Violi, Violia, out of Springfield, Illinois, national company.
Mr. President, through you to Mr. Ambrose. Mr. Ambrose, according to the media, and I talked to Pastor Harris, he went up with some pastors and they met with the governor's chief of staff, which I know you said earlier that no doors are closed, and I understand that as we go through this thing with the assessments or whatever. But I would think, because I know you stay up on what's happening in the city, I would think that you know that the pastor's request was for the governor to get involved and ask that the decision-makers locally really seriously look at the Detroit water system in the interim while they're assessing. And I also know that you allowed Ms. McCormick to speak to us for three minutes in the public comment. In saying that, Mr. Ambrose, would you answer that you are familiar with the pastors going to Lansing?
Well, I'm aware that they were there. I was not there, so if you want to know about the content of that meeting, you really need to talk to them.
Right. I was not there neither. I just know the news reports. And then finally, Mr. Ambrose, as we go to bi-monthly meetings, and as we go to regular committee meetings, and as I look at others, and I look at the budget, would you keep in mind that, I mean, as we look to reduce water rates, we had 2 million come in, and I know it was for the financially distressed cities, and I can remember in council meeting when we discussed that, and I'm glad that some of it has looked like going towards certain areas of the water and sewer fund. And I did make a formal request, and I've asked a few questions, and I'm still going to try to understand it about the money coming in through the general fund to the water and sewer fund. But my bigger question is this, as I believe that we are going to get some more help from the state, I believe we're going to get some more help from possibly the federal government, because all hands is on deck, and that first 2 million shows me something. My question is this, as that money come in, and we can now loosen up other money, and by me knowing the financial landscape, I would ask that we stay open at a possible relook at water rates, and this, as this money come in, and I'm hoping for infrastructure. And then finally, I would also hope that as we peruse the budget, you know, every time something happens to transition us back, I know at one point we went up from 215 every two weeks to 200, 315 every two weeks. I don't mind working, and I work for free. I'm a public servant. But don't overlook that as our responsibilities increase, so do our expenses. And I thank you for listening. I thank you for attending the meetings, and I appreciate the report that you say we have been making progress. Now, you know, I don't believe in emergency managers, but whatever you see and do, I see it and do it, and whatever you say, I hear it. So, Mr. President, and Mr. Ambrose, I thank you for allowing me to make these statements. Any comments to that, Mr. Ambrose? You could make them now or privately, but I appreciate what you're hearing me just say.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any petitions or communications?
No, Mr. President.
All right. Next item on our agenda are council committee reports. First one we have is council, our Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Van Buren.
Yes, thank you. Public Safety met last week on Wednesday, February the 4th. At that time, Chief Cox from the Fire Department informed us that he is in the process of conducting interviews, hopefully to fill six or seven positions in the Fire Department. Also, the Fire Prevention Bureau will be conducting fire safety meetings with neighborhood groups or with citizens groups, so if anyone's interested, please contact the Fire Department. From the Police Department, we had captains that came in and shared with us five goals that Chief Talbot has set for this year. It's the expansion of the citizens' radio patrol, is reduction of arson and B and E activities, continuous training for police personnel to develop hopefully a part-time officers program, and to develop traffic safety plans. Our next Public Safety meeting will be held the first Wednesday of each month, so that will be March 4th next month. Thank you.
Uh, next item is Finance and Administration. Chairperson Galloway is not here tonight. Legislative Committee, that would be the last legislative committee for a while. Councilman Mays, do you have anything to report on that?
Yes, I feel so sad about that legislative committee, because we are the legislative body, and I'm going to probably ask that we relook at that. But since I did chair the only one that I got to chair, and looked like the last one, but I do appreciate you for allowing me, as you combined legislative, governmental ops, and the committee as a whole, allowing me the opportunity to chair the committee as a whole, and we do have a understanding that I might can get fired at any time. But in saying that from the legislative committee, I would say this, as I sit in Public Safety, it was something very interesting came. First of all, as legislative committee, the two members after Mr. Neely was our Mr. Kincaid and myself, and Mr. Kincaid can correct me, but we had an omnibus bill of business license that came before us, and we had worked on for months. And we didn't actually pass them, but we listened to them and we understood the proposed amendments. And we were told that these amendments would be probably passed and adopted by the emergency manager. And one of the key changes was in the old days, all businesses didn't have to check into City Hall in order to be licensed. But under this ordinance, pretty much so, from the bigger businesses, some of them might have to pay a $300 fee. The medical marijuana provisional centers, maybe a $5,000 fee, and maybe some of the small ones that wasn't licensed, a new $75 fee. So without going into the details of all of the changes in the business licensing and where doing business, we moved that to Mr. Ambrose. In the old days, it would come to the emergency manager. It would move through a process. And I want to know, Mr. Bay, do we have to have a public hearing on that before these go into effect? But you can answer that when I finish the report, if you'll put a pen in it and answer that for me. And then finally, I would say, by sitting in the Public Safety Committee, I heard something about the provisional medical marijuana licensing aspect. And we knew and we know from what we heard, Ms. Poplar was there, Mr. Nelson was there, and they chimed in on it to the extent that they wanted something talked about with state legislators. But locally, I asked that more discussion come back during Public Safety, or it come to legislative or the committee as a whole, because we were informed by Captain Bernie that the background check aspect of the licensing was in conflict with the state. And he talked about some alternatives, but based upon the wording of the language, I asked that we take a second look at that and it come up in the appropriate committee. So that would be pretty much the essence of my report. Mr. Kincaid, with a signal of yes or no, are we missing anything? And so those two things, if you can respond to or allow him at appropriate time, Mr. President, it would have to do with is there a necessity of a public hearing, or is it necessary for the ordinance? And the other one was can we get something on the plate about the provisional, the provisional centers for medical marijuana as to relooking at the language that requires background checks or anything else that we find. And we're finding that the application ain't going as smooth, particularly in that area, as we thought it might. And we know we can amend and change. So in saying that, that would conclude my report at this time, Mr. President, and I thank you.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Bay, did you want to respond?
Sure. A public hearing is not required for the emergency manager to adopt ordinances or modify ordinances. And to answer your question, I have got traded calls with Captain Bernie, and I will certainly be looking at that issue, because, you know, obviously want the application process to be smoothed, and for the Police Department to be able to conduct the background checks that the ordinance calls for. And I know that Captain Bernie has been in communication with the state as well on that issue, so when I have more information, I'll let you know.
Can we make sure as a referral that that's added to the next Public Safety agenda? I'm not sure if it was left on as a discussion item or not, but can we make sure that it's there? Planning and Development, Councilman Kincaid.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We haven't met since the last meeting that we had, and we're going to be meeting, and I will have a report at our next council meeting. So I look forward to that, and I encourage council members to come to our Planning and Development Committee meeting if they possibly can.
Next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Same for you, Councilwoman Poplar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The test came, and we did not do an excellent job. We were waiting on the big snow. Um, I, in my word, I can speak. The short streets, the cutty seats, these people were not plowed out until three and four days later after I made 10 million phone calls. So we need to critique this whole snow removal for the city of Flint. I would suggest love Howard to death, but don't get on television saying that we have the city 80% done, when you don't know for sure if this city is 80% done. And with the calls that I received with the people that came down here, this city was not 80% done. The large tractors that they rented or contracted out, whatever they did, they could use more of those, because as I watched this tractor that's big as my house, or bigger, go down the street, it only had to go down the street once. Where you have these other trucks that they rented out, they had to go down the street, up the street. So I'm suggesting to Mr. Ambrose, he's left. Maybe you can tell him, Mr. Mayor, that they need more if they're going to contract out and get additional, you know, to get those large tractors that can do a job once instead of up and down. And they did a great job once they got where they needed to be. But they need to take a look at how the snow removal is going, because it did not go as smoothly as they planned on it. So that was, that's all I got for Public Works, that we can at least, and then I believe on the 18th, we'll have a meeting where, Ms. Ambrose said there's some people that's going to come in about the water or whatever. So we'll have another, for the constituents, another water meeting on the 18th. I don't have a time for it.
It'll be, it'll be during our regular committee meeting. It's not going to be a public forum on that.
Okay.
They're going to come and update council, I believe, on...
So we'll be the ones that'll be updated?
Yeah. That's part of the regular Public Works Committee.
Okay. So are they going to put it on 17, so our constituents will be updated? Because they need to be updated as well as we need to be updated.
I agree 100%. I don't have an answer to that question.
Okay. Well, if you can maybe kick it around with Jerry.
No, I'll write it down, yeah.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
One second. Yeah, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, is it proper to ask that the ordinance is legislative is gone? I had asked that those ordinances dealing with the water deposit of $425, I think it is. I wanted it relooked at. I also looked at ordinances dealing with water that had to do with the poverty exemption tied to home ownership. I wanted to see if we could break that loose and deal with poverty exemption ordinances and laws as it relates strictly to the income level. And so those are the type ordinances that I want it brought to legislative. Now, I don't know if it would be proper to bring them to Public Works under water discussion or what, but I'm asking that those ordinances be put on the agenda, and I had said more than those two dealing with water, because I want to review those ordinances and try to give the citizens some relief through proposed legislation. And even the ordinance that deal with a one-time leak adjustment. When I dealt with the apartments, it was multiple leaks, and I wanted that on the agenda, because I want to amend that for the residents. So now I'm asking, and I appreciate you allowing me, I want those ordinances and those water ordinances on an immediate agenda and maybe Public Works, so we can discuss what I think we might can do for the residents in some of those areas. At least we should be able to look at it.
Yeah, we'll put that on the next Public Works Agenda meeting, and I'll make sure that Janelle gets those ordinances added to that agenda for discussion.
Okay, and Mr. President...
So the way it's going to be now, instead of having a legislative committee, so it's just going to go to the committee that would deal with that ordinance or that piece of legislation. So if it's a finance, it would go to finance. If it's a Public Works, it's going to go to Public Works, rather than having a standalone legislative committee.
And Mr. President, if I may, finally, the 2 million that's coming in, that's going to the water and sewer fund for those designated purposes, and I know that it's coming in in the spring, but, you know, when you look at the audit, you know it's coming, and it's coming. Also, the relief that we might get as far as the money that we paid for the upgrades for the plant, I hear we might get some relief from the state on that. And I've been in conversation with our former colleague, Mr. Neely, and he was at the press conference that we went over to. Mr. Davis was there. I was there. Ms. Pastor Harris was there. You know, we've been talking with these people. And so if we have federal and state money come in, and hopefully I anticipate more, what I'm asking is that can you put a referral on Finance Committee meeting, because I don't want that money to come in, or we know it's coming, and then we loosen up 2 million, loosen up another 4 million, and before we can get it on any agenda they done planned. We was able to speak on that financially distressed city's money ahead of time. And we, the council, whether they give us credit or not, we said we wanted it to, we wanted the area to look at. We could have looked at water. We could have looked at public safety or whatever. And we kind of said water, and now they saying water. So all I'm asking is a referral for these monies that might be loosened up now if we have other money to come in to go to finance, because if it loosens up infrastructure money, and we've been, in my term, gouging the residents for money for infrastructure, because the water bill is one thing, the extra money, whatever we call them, service charges, whatever, that's got us with these high rates is another thing. I want something on Finance Committee meeting, because I'm anticipating money. It's a political year, and I'm telling you, the minute it hit, I want to be in the discussion about a possible lowering the water rates. I don't care if it's 6% lower.
Councilman Mays, I'll put that on as a discussion item for our next finance, which will be the first Wednesday in March.
Thank you.
I believe it's the first Wednesday in March. Okay. Anything else? Next item on the agenda then is appointments, and we have three of them. 1-50102, 103, and 104. Someone wanted to make a motion.
Mr. President, I've moved 1-50102, 1-50103, and 1-50104.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Kincaid, supported by Councilwoman Poplar. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Just, just a sec. Let me let the clerk go real quick, and then I can let you go.
Yes, Mr. President. For the purpose of the record, on the appointment of Mr. Winfrey to the EDC Board, there's a typographical error on the date of his expiration, which we will correct. The date of expiration is February 9th, 2021, and it indicates here June 26, 2013. The resolution is correct, but we will make the appropriate notes in the body of the blurb here. See, it shows expired here. Yeah, this is secure. Just for the record.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, these are two resolutions that appoint councilperson Van Buren, one to the Planning Steering Committee meeting. I think that's what I went to, to the library the other day. Ms. Poplar, you on that committee already?
Certainly am.
And then the other one is to the MTA. I'm kind of jealous of that. I like the MTA, but I have no objections, and so I'll vote in favor of both of those. But the one that I'm now kind of speaking on gingerly is the one to Mr. Winfrey to the EDC Board. I've got a passion for economic development, and I said the other night, when I heard that they was appointing Mr. Nelson to the EDC, I said, now, what is the mayor's logic there? I said, why would he appoint people for a six-year term, I think it is, and we don't know so far what's happening election-wise? And so I said, because of Mr. Nelson, I'm going to vote for it. And I said, I can't do that no more. And now here's a person who I feel comfortable with, who I had conversation with, and here I am, this quick in a predicament to do something, which I said I won't, and it has no reflection on Mr. Nelson or Mr. Winfrey. But I'm wondering, what is the mayor up to with this political appointment on the EDC? And I'm saying, well, I know they going to all be on the ballot on the same election. Has that got something to do with it? Don't he know I like EDC? So, Mr. Winfrey, let's see what I vote on this, because I got to be a man of my word. I would predict that my colleagues didn't say what I said, but you going to watch a vote here, and we going to see what my record reflect, because there's a lady out there say that I'm so political, and I am. I'm in politics, but I got to teach the mayor and anybody who didn't see me or hear me that I mean what I say, and I say what I mean. And once I say something publicly, this is the identical thing that I spoke on. And I said, Mr. Nelson, I'm going to do it, but Mr. Mayor can't do me like that no more. And I have talked to the mayor privately about it, and so I understand his logic. He says it's all good. I understand that. But I said something. And then Mr. Winfrey is probably one of the sharpest, smartest councilperson up here. You know, I'm pretty sharp myself, so it's no reflection on Mr. Winfrey. And so in saying that, I now have to vote, but sometime I have to do what I say I'm going to do. And to you, Mr. Mayor, this vote will reflect what I think as it relates to the communications or lack thereof prior to making recommendations across the desk of Councilman Mays. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other discussion? Can we have roll call?
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
I'm abstain. And I'm abstain because I said I wouldn't support it. To me, that would be a yes vote, but because it's Mr. Winfrey, I don't want to vote no. And so the city attorney, anybody can do, but my word and my integrity means something, and they can rule it any way they want. But Councilman Mays abstains for what he just put on the record.
The vote is seven yes with one abstention.
Motion passes. We have no licenses and no bonds. We have a few resolutions. There is a slight change to the agenda. We will be voting on a 1-50100.2. is a slight change to the agenda. We will be voting on a 150100.2, 150105, and 150106.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kincaid?
I'd move them one at a time. I would first move 150100.2, which is properly before.
Support has been moved by Councilman Kincaid and supported by Councilwoman Poplar. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. So this is the, this would be the new vision statement. And based upon what Mr. Ambrose reflected in the committee meeting, or the committee at the whole. And I like for people to say what they mean and what they say. I'm gonna support this, but at the same time, I'm listening to what Mr. Davis is saying. And so before we vote for this, I would ask, because unless I hear something different from the city attorney in reference to what Mr. Davis alluded to, I'm gonna support it. If the city attorney say something different, then I'll change my mind. Mr. President, through the you to the city attorney, Mr. Davis talked about, I think, in one thing in particular, and he can correct me if he wrong, it was a New Go C. And he was wondering, was it ambiguous or vague or something? And I don't want to put words in his mouth. But then we heard from the clerk that it came out of the preamble. And so have you had a chance to look at the mayors and who's ever proposed amendments to that strategic plan, vision, mission, and goal statement? And can you give me some feedback?
I did discuss this issue briefly before the start of the council meeting. Councilman Nelson brought it to my attention. You know, there's nothing illegal about adding this language. There is a level of vagueness to it in terms of what the city would do to secure these fundamental rights. But, you know, it allows for the city to take certain action. It allows for this body, at least vocally, to pass a resolution if they believe fundamental rights aren't being addressed. Certainly, my office, through the enforcement of the code, can ensure that the fundamental rights are being addressed. We encounter fundamental rights every time we enter a courtroom or defend the city. Constitutional claims are brought from time to time. So, you know, it is a very broadly stated goal. It's, you know, a goal that I think all of us, taking an oath to uphold the Constitution, promise to make. But, you know, that's about, you know, it's for this body to decide whether it's too broad or not. I don't see a legal reason, legal problem with it, but it is a pretty far-reaching goal.
Mr. President, can I say something, Mr. President? Were you done, Councilman Mays?
I wasn't done, but I'm curious to see what Mr. Davis is gonna say. Because what happens here in this discussion is gonna affect my vote. But I want to double-check something. Did I hear Mr. Bay say he had had some conversation with Councilperson Nelson? And so that's what I thought he said. So I heard how Councilman Nelson voted in committee. He had had some conversation. He was ahead of the curve. I didn't see it coming, but I'm listening. Once I hear from what Mr. Davis has to say, Vice President Davis, then I think I might be ready to vote. So thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Bay, for giving a statement on this. But he did make a statement about the vagueness. That was my, that was the problem I had. Because in the language, we want to make sure that there's some certainty there. Because whenever people take an issue and there's a constitutional violation, then the courts get involved, then it becomes a matter of interpretation. And depending on who makes that interpretation, if that ruling is in their favor, it can be looked at as being a form of injustice. And only, and in the long haul, it will rise, it will rise to higher levels and higher levels of legality or in the legal court that may have to go to the Sixth Circuit, that they have the last saying, and what they say is absolute. And Mr. Bay, Attorney Bay, knows that I'm telling the truth in regards to that. My problem was with that is that we want to make sure that we leave no room for misinterpretation. And we want to make sure that everybody is served equally, with fairness, and in a just manner. And when we leave it to the, to the eyes or to the understanding of that one who may be doing the interpretation, it may not be in the person who filed the suit in their favor, and it may not be in the city's favor, because I have to protect the city as well. But I want to make sure that everybody's been served fair. And I think that that language needs to be redone to the point, or revised, to the point where that we know that people would be treated fair. Because Attorney Bay did make a statement and said that there is some vagueness there. And that's what concerns me. And that's what concerned me from the beginning. I yield my right back to the president.
Mr. President?
Does anybody else want to speak first?
I would like to. If I could, Mr. Chair, through you to the, my colleague over there, if he could be specific, what is it that specifically that you have an issue with?
The part about being secure.
In which, which one?
When it says...
You haven't got the paper?
I have.
The city will secure the equal protection. Here it goes. Here it is right here.
Oh, so you, oh, you're speaking in the number C?
Yeah, right here, where it say, "The city will secure the equal protection of the law for each person in accordance with fundamental human rights." That word, "secure," is a little uncertain, because we don't know if we can make, if we can secure. We know that we can advocate, and we know that we can defend. But it don't mean that we can interpret it in that manner, that we can absolute secure somebody. Secure is absolute. We don't know that. That's where the vagueness come at. And I think Attorney Bay can, will agree with me on that. I will hope. I can't put nothing in his mouth, but I will hope.
I do tend to agree with you that the word "secure" probably isn't appropriate. I think the word "promote" would be better. The city certainly can promote equal protection of the law, but I think that the word "secure" may imply that the city is going to take affirmative action to secure fundamental rights. And the city cannot represent an individual whose rights have been denied. They certainly in its own actions, whether through my office or a police officer, can promote the fundamental rights of someone in our interactions. So my recommendation is to change the word from "secure" to "promote."
Councilman Winfrey, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. And that's why I wanted and showed the wording to the city attorney, because there was discussion in committee meeting. Nothing to say that anything was wrong about it, but it was just too broad. And our city attorney mentioned "secure" is what he had a problem with. So if we could change that...
Are you offering that as an amendment?
I'm offering that as amendment, that we would change that to "promote." And then I would, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Been moved, a subsequent motion has been moved by Councilman Nelson, supported by Councilman Kincaid to change "secure" to "promote." Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll probably support the amendment. I'll watch and see what Mr. Davis says in this sense. But in my own personal sense, when you deal with the "promote" or "secure," I might would have supported it with "secure," and I'll tell you why. Because I'm the one who experienced trying to get some equal protection secured. You know, at the beginning, you had the mayor, city officials. I'm sure they had consulted with the city attorney, emergency manager, council people asking for my resignation before I had even been to trial in court. And so I take it seriously when we look at fundamental rights. Some people say that good water is a human right. And when we say that we gonna secure certain fundamental rights and deal with equal protection, I know that in the federal court right now as we speak, Judge Steed said that because of the cities with 52% black folks in the state of Michigan, that the equal protection clause have reached the threshold of a prima facie case as it relates to whether or not Public Act 436 is constitutional or not. So when I'm voting on some, dealing with securing or promoting equal protection under the law as it relates to legalities and/or human rights, everything that we live in or that I have lived makes me say, I'm not gonna take the discussion lightly. And that's why I opened it up. I appreciate Mr. Bay, Mr. Davis, Mr. Nelson, and Mr. Winfrey, and Mr. Kincaid's amendment. Everybody who have chimed in on it, I appreciate your, the opportunity for you to chair this discussion. Because in a nutshell, what I've experienced from the city as it relates to human rights with water, my legal proceedings, this means something. And my vote as it relates to this means something. And so I thank you all, and let's see what I do. God bless you.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Well, I just, I just feel, President, Mr. President, that we need to redo the entire language. Secure and change to promote is great. But we want to make sure that it don't come back and bite us when it started moving into the courts. Because there always room for interpretation. And I don't think that we can clear it all. Because even when people fighting in legal court, there's always interpretation until it reach to a certain court where their statement and their interpretation is absolute, which is the Sixth Circuit. But I want to make sure, and I will hope that my colleagues want to make sure as well, that we leave no room on the lower level where that we have control, that there would be no misinterpretation. So that whatever we stand on, we stand on it on solid ground, and it can never be shaken. And if it goes to the appeals court, if it goes to the Sixth Circuit, the Second Circuit, however many circuits it go to, we want to make sure that we have our Ts covering and our Ds, I mean, our Ts crossed and our Is dotted. So that's just my standing, and I'll let that go. But I just hope that we can put the language in it, and that people will feel that they are being treated fair and just.
Okay. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. President, I should indicate with that one-word change, this is now a point three.
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Popla?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Motion to amend passes.
Mr. President, I'd move 10, 150100.3.
Been moved by Councilman Kincaid. Is there support?
Support.
It's been supported by Councilman Nelson. Is there any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. President, so we will revisit this strategic plan, vision, and mission and goal statement a year from now.
Right.
And knowing that we will revisit this after a year, as part of our ongoing, I'm ready to vote.
Any further discussions? Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Popla?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Motion passes. 150105 and 106, Councilman Nelson?
Move, support.
Support. Been moved by Councilman Nelson, supported by Councilwoman Poplar to move this. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, this will be a public hearing setup.
Yes.
At some time in the future. This is a motion to rescind the previous order and simply a motion in order to set the public hearing.
Yes.
And that's what this is.
Yes.
Through you to Mr. Bay, what made this require a public hearing different than some?
I believe there's an MDOT regulation that requires a public hearing, and that came from Kay Muhammad.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bay, I'm about ready to vote.
Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, men clerk?
Is this only, only, on, on both of them? Okay. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Popla?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
We have no liquor licenses or ordinances on the agenda tonight. The next item up then is our public speakers, speakers? Who is number one, clerk?
Our first public speaker is Ms. Minnie Mastin. Ms. Minnie Mastin.
She's passed.
Passed, okay. Our next public speaker is Ms. Ida Napier. Ms. Napier.
My name's Ida Napier, and my only concern is the water. I spend $100 a month buying water. I have to take wa, I have to cook with the water. I have to, I have grandkids that come over to my house, have to cook with the water. I have a cat, and the cat don't even drink the water coming out the tap. I went, I'm not gonna call the name of this nursing facility. I went by the nursing facility, and all the patients, they told us we had to get masks and put them on because a lot of patients at the facility is ill. They coming down, they having, some of them have diarrhea, a whole bunch of them. And I've been going to this nursing facility for a while now. We have, I have a friend out there in it, one of the residents. And I mean, it's just things going on now with, with us elders. These elder peoples I'm talking about, that I've seen that they were looking real healthy, acting healthy, but now they are all sick. And this here was no morning, about a couple of hours ago, we just left there. And so what I was concerned about is me buying water. When you know water used to be, God put the water down here for us, it's supposed to have been free for us. But we, I have to buy water, not only to drink, but to cook with. And I spend over $100 a month on water, and I'm on a fixed income. I'm 72 years old. I just left my doctor's office today, that'll put me on new medication. My body don't even feel like it used to anymore. All my hair done fell out. My hair was down to here a few months ago. Now it's no longer than this right here. My hair done fell out. Just every time I wash my hair in that water, my hair just get hard and just fall out. And I'm not the only one that says, they are losing their hair. The last meeting was at, at the Annan Ogbathas Church, it was four or five people there saying the same thing. This water right here is not only killing us, I mean, making us ill, it's taking, taking our, I mean, when you, when my daughter took a bath in the water, she came out looking like a lobster. She, you should see her body now. My granddaughter, she took a bath in the water. You can't even take a bath, shower in the water. If the water's real hot, it's messed your body up. I get up every morning to make me tea. When I take tea, I don't need anything to take for my bowels anymore. All you gotta do is drink some tea, and you don't have to take no milk or magnesium, because it's gonna, you gonna have to have diarrhea. And so this is not right. This is something God gave to us free, but we have to go to the store and buy it just to cook with it, bathe with it. And if a cat don't take the water, what you think a human want to do? And that's all I have to say. We need to do something about this water. Because you guys don't live here in Flint. Most of you don't. You don't have to drink it. You don't have to take a bath. Just stay in one of the whole, just stay at somebody's, just go to somebody's homes and take a ba, a shower and see what's gonna happen to you. That's all I gotta say. We need to do something. Because I have to take money to buy water, let my taxes go. My house is going to foreclosure.
Thank you, Ms. Napier.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Well...
Can you explain to the public that if they stick around, we will communicate there and respond to their concerns?
I think we've only got four speakers now, so yeah.
We only have three left.
Three left.
Okay. And we want, and then we'll respond.
Okay. Our next speaker is Ms. Gertrude Marshall. Ms. Marshall? Ms. Gertrude Marshall. She's gone. Next speaker, Mr. Arthur Woodson. Mr. Woodson? Mr. Woodson.
How you doing?
Good evening.
I have a question. When Mr. Ambrose got up here, and he said that they was bringing somebody new in, I didn't see anyone from the council ask how much this is gonna cost the city of Flint for them coming in to tell us or do something that we know that they can't fix, or we know that there's something wrong with the water. I have serious issues with some of the council members, and past council members. You all are voting, and sometimes you don't look at and read what you're voting, and you vote to go along, to get along type attitude. As a, a city resident, I have, I'm able to question your voting, the way you're voting. Don't take it personal and start downgrading me or anything of the sort, because I'm questioning your voting habits. That's not right. It's not personal, it's just the way that you are voting. I told you a while ago that I'm gonna be a watchdog. I was, I was in a war, I'm a veteran. I went overseas to fight for our democracy. This is dictatorship here. This is dictatorship, and I ain't go over there willing to lose my life to come back over here for people to be bought in backroom deals. I'm not running for office, I'm not a politician, I'm not any of that. But I do have family, friends, here in the city of Flint. Now, you just said that y'all won't be having an ordinance, uh, anytime soon. The homeless veterans, we, uh, our helpless veterans, over across the street, uh, we have what they call a Michigan Trust Fund, Soldier Relief Fund. When they have a shut-off notice, they have two different, uh, meetings, uh, the committee does, to approve if the veteran would be able to receive funds to pay their water bill. Well, when we call over here to the water department, they say that they don't have any ordinance to hold up the payment until the committee meets to approve for the veteran. I'm asking, could you, uh, uh, vote on it or discuss it, so that I can go back over to the VA, uh, across the street, the Veteran Affairs, and let them know that they can call over to the water department and put a hold on that veteran's, uh, shut-off notice? And also, uh, it's a lot of homeless veterans that's coming here with HUD VAS from Ann Arbor Saginaw. HUD VAS is something similar to Section Eight. Uh, they don't have any money. They don't have, the veteran is coming from substance abuse, uh, alcohol abuse, mental illnesses, and they coming straight from the hospital. When they get a HUD VAS, they don't have to pay any money, but they don't have any money. So I'm asking if you could pass some type of ordinance, when, uh, they call you from the clinic, uh, Clinic Outpatient Center over on Linden Road, if you all can speak to public, I mean, water department, and find out if, uh, their deposit could be waived for the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our last speaker is Mr. Ariel Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell?
I'm Ariel Mitchell. I live at seven fifty-nine East Linden Street. To the President, to the city clerk, a question. Anis, Ms. Anis, could you tell me why come you told me, uh, I couldn't use the public bathroom no more behind the chambers?
Because it's not public.
Look on that, right there on the door, right there, committee, room, public, welcome. What that mean? For the record. Thank you. But, and Josh, do you, I mean, to, to, Nelson and the lady beside him, Ms. Poplar, and, Ms., no reflecting on you, Nelson, you, uh, I'm finna talk about this, this Africa dude, I know you in the race, but, uh, I just left ten oh one North Saginaw Street to eleven oh one. And I was put out of the house twice, from last night, from Mary Street to that British Sharm Salam on Saginaw Street, by a woman looked just like Ms. Poplar, over there laughing. Cause by significant other, she put, put her face in the book in the thing, just got a whole lot of money, then she met, and some dude gonna finally come over, but he pure about Africa. But she came over there, talking, is he gonna be, you might as well put him out, and left out before. And she said, no more, I'm gonna put, beat you out in a minute, cause here, I'm talking about public safety. It's, I'm a black man born in the United States. You got a big old dude, oversight picnic dude, look like that, that dude right there, Davidson, but, coming on, and they gonna put me out, be, and talking, you all talking about public safety and stuff, you know? And another thing, from, back to city clerk, I found a letter in my mailbox after they put me out last at the British Sharm on all them, picnic. It was a letter from the mayor. I noticed he said, uh, something about a Bible, where's the Bible that he spoke of in the, in the room back there? Talking about the Bible, and then you, uh, and then it said, the mayor said, Mr. Mitchell, eroded it, said, I want you to call this number before we can have some, uh, twenty-four hours to test your water. But I noticed my landlord, he owns the house. Anywhere I, anywhere he go, I automatically have a house. And I heard about some preachers went to Lansing, and I ain't gonna be no pushover preacher and stuff like those.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Martin Luther King and stuff, and like those Jim John purple Kool-Aid.
All right.
Drinking that cyanide.
Thank you.
Yo, Nelson met, dealt with them name, I told you, man.
Mr. Mitchell, can you take?
Talkin' about, uh...
Can you sit down, please? Your time's expired.
On that, jump!
Thank you. Council discussion is next.
Mr. President? Okay, Mr. President, the first speaker that I heard from, and I hope that she'll indulge me, she raised some real interesting points, because the information that I have is that we have some, um, minimum drinking water standards, but now I'm learning that we need some minimum bathing and showering water standards. My mom, eighty-four, fits one of the categories of the elderly, compromised immune system, both. And, you know, infants, the notice went out. I suspect it'll be another notice come out to end this month, first of March. And whenever that notice come out, I'm noticing that unlike before, it rashes at my household. And I've made, I told my mother, when I seen it today, go to the doctor, and she had been complaining about itching, and I believe it's got something to do with the chlorine and chloride. Now, I've said this before, and I told the pastors when they went to Lansing, tough about showering, bathing standards. I'm on a Facebook page with Florissa and, 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 um, all of the other people that's gonna be marching Saturday with the, um, expert coming in here with Aaron Berkovich, and I'll be there, and I've been out there with them, and I'm hearing from their research, and from people talking, that there's a different standard when it comes to these airborne carcinogens or whatever it is, but TTHMs don't just travel through drinking. When the shower, and the steam, and the water is hot, when it comes from steam rooms and/or showers and baths and boiling an egg, that is something moving around that haven't really been addressed or looked at. And I think, um, Mr. Woodson was right. How much is this consultant gonna cost? We did find out that the name and where they was coming from, but Mr. Woodson has a point, and I would ask that we find that out. I heard in the press conference with Hollings them and Neely them, the governor, that they said something like nine hundred million was gonna be set aside from the two million. So I think it's high time we find out how much they...
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, nine hundred thousand. Y'all catch me if I'm saying it wrong. But then, thank you, Ms. Poplar, and Mr. President. But nine hundred thousand, and I even thought that was a lot, because I don't know what that service include and what's going on there. Also, when it, when Mr. Woodson talking about holding up payments for fund for the veterans, I think all he's saying is that we know that when you got the DHS calling among them, stuff can be put on hold. And I think I'd like to make that referral to Public Works or the Finance Committee, because if they have a system where they see money coming, I think that can be a practice that we put payments on hold. I'll talk to you, Mr. Woodson, more about the HUD VAS and details, but I can make the referral as far as the contact for the veterans' payments that would be coming in that could hold something off until it got there. We kinda do that practice now. And going back, I can assure you, ma'am, for the standards for bathing and showering, I'm seeing not only at the nursing homes are they using the bottled water, but the state of Michigan issued it to the students under, you know, the Genesee County Intermediate School District. And so the state is kinda scared and cautionary as far as what people use it. And I've heard enough complaints that I believe, and I know for a fact doctors has gave people communications from the Veterans Administration, and can name names to others. And Mr. Davis spoke on it. I don't always agree with the jurisdiction, because we had a federal court case dismissed for lack of jurisdiction of Mr. Anderson Fernandez. But I can assure you, it's been some meetings, and it is lawyers now that we have all of the good information as it relates to the source, the Detroit water. I think that's pretty clean now. They done excused themselves out. Ain't nothing else to hook up, we already hooked up. Money is there, and more money look like it's gonna come in. Money ain't a problem, we hooked up, ain't no lump sum payment. And I can assure you that we don't have to do a long-term agreement. And finally, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, come on.
If people are trying to put you out of public facilities, and if you acting right, then that shouldn't happen. You know, they tried to put me out my council seat, and we just discussed that. And I'm not referring to anybody, but I believe that, um, you know, people should treat you fairly. And I know that you treated me fairly once, and you caught some repercussions. I'm not talking about this. I'm not talking about this.
Yeah.
Because you don't have to go to that one, you can go to that one right there. But I'm talking about something else. So I just wanted to address everybody and say, Mr. President, I'm gonna continue to meet with the activists, I'm gonna continue to show up with the Defense Democracy League, and I'm gonna continue to try to fight for the state and the federal funds, and watch all the politicians, and ask my colleagues and others to fight for good water yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
These water giveaways don't do it. We do fourteen million gallons a, a month, and they giving away two thousand gallons. It's all good, but we need good water for everybody yesterday.
Councilwoman Poplar?
Thank you. You know I wasn't there, but I heard you cry.
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern, I know it was a grant that got the two million dollars, but my concern is what is this person going to do with, for nine hundred thousand dollars? That's half of the grant. So I'm just wondering, um, I know he's supposed to see where the water's being, uh, lost, and... And then my other, um, problem I had, when the grant came, um, when the administration found out about it, disrespected council members by not letting the councilperson of the ward know that you were gonna do a press conference. Once my colleagues got there for the press conference, they were not gonna let elected officials in, because this was a state of the Michigan press conference? That's crazy within itself.
Yep.
So I spoke with Jason Lorenz, and I'm hoping that Jason got in touch, since he's the PR person for the city of Flint, with those in Lansing to let them know, protocol still exists, no matter who is in charge, no matter who's signing what, protocol is still in existence. I am still the ward person for the second ward, and I need to be notified, and let it be my choice if I don't want to attend a state of Michigan press conference. I think it was very shaggy, the way that it was done, and it, I did not appreciate it. This water problem, I feel the plight of my constituents and others in the city of Flint. We had an incident where we couldn't even baptize at Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church, because the water was not properly for a child to get in. And they ran that water for quite a while. True, it may have been the pipes, but there is something wrong. Too much chlorine, and we need to find out. We need to do something. People are not just making this up. And Mr. Ambrose, I'm sure, like, he, it's in his hands, but we need, if we can spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars on a new city administrator, and an extra ten thousand for her to get comfortable in the city of Flint, we need to start giving people some type of, um, tax, not tax, but water break. Because this is becoming a slap in the face. We're bringing these people in, we don't know anything about them, emergency manager brought them in, we didn't like him and trust him in the first place, so why should we trust somebody that he's bringing? And we're not helping our own people. I have constituents, older ones, that are now moving out of the city to senior citizen, um, apartments, where they can live safer, they can live cheaper, and they, they just walk and leave their homes. We gotta do something about this. So those are my gripes for the night. I don't know whose ears they gonna fall on. Um, Mr. Ambrose, like I've always told him, he may have a heart, but I haven't seen it yet. And I know, um, Governor Snyder, he doesn't have a heart either. And so that's the way I feel about him, and I've said all I'm gonna say about him. So thank you, Mr. President, for letting me vent.
Councilman Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Both of my colleagues have already, um, expressed some of the things of the concerns I had tonight, so I won't go over them. But I do want to thank Councilman Mays for calling, um, when this press conference, um, was going to happen. Uh, he called and informed us, and we did go there, and at first, they, it was a private press conference. And, um, him talking to others, um, allowed us to come in, allowed us to come in. That kinda took me by surprise, but first, I hadn't heard of it at all. Ms. Poplar didn't know anything about it. So, uh, thanks, Councilman Mays, for the call.
I thank the media. The media told me.
Well, and whoever relayed the message, thank you. Um, because, um, I don't know how you can ex-councilpersons, and if the mayor was allowed to go in, then we should have been able, um, but thank you. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Councilman Davis?
Uh, I wanna say to the young lady that was just up here speaking about her health conditions, your health conditions may be attributed to this water, but what I be expressing to people is that they have to make this a legal issue. That's the only way we're gonna get this issue resolved. I feel that if the emergency manager is gonna spend money on fixing some pipes, that some of that money should be spent on getting an expert toxicologist or expert pathologist. Because if we file a lawsuit, the lawsuit more likely will be thrown out, because we not crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. And what I mean by that... And what I mean by that is the federal court states, this is law, and Peter Bay can agree with me, probably, I know he will, that you cannot file a lawsuit and the plaintiff would not be, the law would not be ruled in your favor if it's just on mere speculation or conjecture. You can't make a guess and say that your condition is attributed to the water if you don't have an expert testimony. You need an expert testimony from a toxicologist or pathologist or some physician that can attribute it. Because soon as you file a lawsuit, the state is going to get their experts and going to beat yours up because you don't have an expert and they're going to dismiss that suit. But if you filed the 42 USC 1983 complaint, that's federal law, constitutional law, which means that your constitution was violated. You have to overcome a hurdle which is called summary disposition, which means all you got to prove is a genuine issue of material fact. I got rashes on my body, my hair is falling out. Your expert is going to say that this can be attributed to the Flint River. That's surviving summary disposition. That is a genuine issue of material fact. Now, the courts don't say that you're right. They don't say that the state is right. They just says that this is an issue that needs to go to trial. In that 42 USC 1983 complaint, you filed for an injunctive relief, which means that you're asking that they shut down using the Flint River. That injunctive relief would be ruled in your favor if you survived the summary disposition, which is a genuine issue of material fact. I express this a lot because the only way you're going to ever fight this issue, it got to be legal. It has to be legal. It can't be off just mere emotion.
Did your letter state?
It stated that. It stated that, sister, but we got to get, huh? Let me finish. Let me finish. My letter stated this, but people who are held with these conditions, I'm giving you some education. That's all I'm giving. And you have to run with that education. Because if I was affected by it, which I may be, I don't know. My wife has a rash and I told her to go to the doctor and we did. If that doctor comes back with that report saying that her condition is attributed to the Flint River, we're going to file a 42 USC 1983 and I'm going to file it myself. I'm going to go to this law library and spend hours and hours a day because I survived one before and I know exactly how to do it. And I know you might have read it in the paper. And I will file a 42 USC 1983 and I will prove a genuine issue of material fact. This is what you have to do. And you have to get a lawyer, an environmentalist attorney. Just not know any attorney. It has to be environmentalist attorney and a toxicologist corroborating your allegations. You can get a pathologist too because he can make, he can make an assertion. It's enough to be an expert testimony. Because once you get into federal courts, it's going to be considered as an expert witness. You're going to need an expert witness. You're going to need discovery, depositions and everything else. But what you're looking for is injunctive relief. That's what you're looking for. You want them to put the hold on this Flint River and then we won't have this problem. Now, that's what I'm going to spend my five minutes doing, just giving you some education. And you take it however you want it and run with it. But until we, we can have a million people outside protesting. We can have a million people in here. But what we need to do is get on the game, get on our ball and get the attorney, environmentalist, and tell your attorney that you want to file a 42 USC 1983 complaint and ask for an injunctive relief. That's what you want to ask them to do. And you want, when you go to your attorney, you want your attorney to hire a toxicologist, which will be considered an expert or a pathologist. You want that. Because if you don't have that, the federal court going to always throw your case out.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Winfrey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Napier, is she still here?
Yes.
Yes. Catholic Charities is giving away two cases per family of bottled water. All you have to do is show your proof of residency. Now, that won't stop you from paying any money from what you're doing now, but it might defray the cost a little bit. And I do hear you and I'm sorry that you have to go through this. Mr. Woodson, I want you to, I want to, I want to stay after the meeting and we can walk wherever and talk about this, this veterans' relief as it relates to water. I didn't, I didn't hear as much as I needed to hear. I'm a little slow at learning sometimes, but I need you to educate me on that, okay? Okay? Because you're talking about an ordinance and that seems like that might be something that, that one of us or myself even could do. But I just need a little bit more information. And then finally, Mr. Chair, as we were in our committee of the whole meetings and I want to circle back to something that Councilman Mays said to me that just made so much sense to me and it could be my ignorance to everything that's going on as a neophyte. But he talked about the source of money that's coming from Lansing and he, I think he indicated that why can't we use that money or portions of that money to pay down on the debt? And that seems to me to just make so much sense. But I want to go a little bit further and see if we can find out, is there a law that says we can't or what regulations said that we can't pay some of it or all of it on a debt? I, I just don't see where that would hurt us at all. But again, it might be something that I just don't know about. So whatever we need to do to find that information out, can we do that?
Yeah, I'll order that as a referral for our Finance Administration Committee.
Okay.
And then we can discuss it at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Napier?
Yes, I only have a few things to say. It seems like the other council representatives have already spoken to the majority of the questions and statements that were presented to us. One thing is, I agree with Councilwoman Poplar, is we do need to be informed through media activities and so forth. There has to be some protocol that exists two ways. I thought as council and as we work with the mayor, that that was always an understanding, but maybe we don't have that understanding as clear as we should. So hopefully that will improve. If that information could also be shared with the mayor for any future, you know, information that as events are scheduled, especially with the media, that we at least be informed that they're going on. We were informed with a lot of the water activities, so this is still part of the water activities. So we need to know what the information is out there so we can also share it with our constituents. The other thing is the march that is to happen this Saturday, and this may be a question more to the city attorney. If there's a proper process to have a march in the city, I heard they're going to march from City Hall to the old Duran Hotel. I don't know if they're clear to march on the street, the sidewalk. I'm hoping that whoever is responsible for that has checked with City Hall to make sure there will be no problems. Is there a process? I guess would be my question to the city attorney or to the president if that could be shared. Because I, I think there'll be future marches and protests and I would hate for some people to be embarrassed where they can't do it, especially when you have some special guests that are coming in for this event on Saturday. And then last, the one thing I want to mention, as we work on the water issues, we're coming into the warm weather as to spring and summer events. We've got major events. When you think of the Krim Race, but right now, I'm thinking of Back to the Bricks. We have hundreds, thousands of people that will be in the city of Flint, visiting our restaurants, possibly drinking our water. And what type of message are we sending out to these events if we cannot get the water condition back the way that it should? We want to continue to have these events here. We want to continue to have people visit our city and not scare them away. So I guess I'm sending that out to put it always in our mind as we move forward, that it not only affects the residents, it affects the economy, it affects our future. So please, as we move forward, hopefully some of this will become a better situation for our residents. Thank you.
Did you?
Sure. I mean, to respond to your question about utilization of the roadway for a parade or a march, the city does require a permit. And I know, do you still handle those or is that going to?
No, that goes to downstairs to Maxine's office.
Okay, so it should go to Maxine Marie if someone wants to have a parade or close off part of the street, same like some folks want to have a race, things like that. If it involves utilization of city resources, typically we seek compensation for that. For example, if we need police officers to block off the roadway, and this is done to protect the public health, safety and welfare. So, but otherwise, if someone does not obtain that permission and a permit, it would be illegal and in violation of multiple laws to utilize the roadway and extremely hazardous.
Do you know how much of a advance notice that has to be given?
I don't. I would think a minimum of 30 days for the city to process an application of that nature to evaluate what would be needed to ensure that, you know, the path that is being contemplated, it may be more than that, but I would say at least 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
We're not done yet, but we'll come back to you.
On that issue.
Anything else, Councilwoman Napier?
No, thank you.
Councilman Kincaid?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to switch gears. Most of my colleagues have covered most of the, or actually they've covered all of the issues on water that I was going to mention. I want to mention and talk about this last snow event that we had. And what a terrible job that the Department of Transportation did as far as addressing this problem. One, early on, Genesee County and surrounding communities had their snowplow equipment out doing their major roads at 4:00 in the morning. We didn't call our people in until 7:00 in the morning. Major streets like Atherton Road where Diplomat Pharmacy is, where General Motors truck and bus, Hemp Hill Road where the Flint Engine Plan is, unfortunately Vance Lake and Bristol Road were plowed by the county. But some of those roads didn't get plowed until late in the afternoon on Monday. And I went over to 12th Street Yard in the afternoon and there were a number of underbody plow trucks, two Fent tractors setting in the yard. One of them had never been started and moved and the other one was just parked. I don't, I don't know what it was doing. It wasn't getting fuel. But I guess my point to this is that last year, it was disastrous. We had 17 inches of snow, 19 inches of snow over multiple numbers of days and it took weeks, it took more than a week to get into the neighborhood streets. We had nine inches of snow in one evening, started late Sunday during the Super Bowl and ended at 4:00 in the morning, averaged about nine inches of snow in the city. And it took us a week to clean the neighborhood streets. And that's just unacceptable. And I don't know if it's that we don't have enough proper equipment. The tractors that we are leasing this year did, did a fairly good job when they got into the neighborhood, but they didn't get down to the concrete. They left anywhere from three to four inches of snow and when cars drive over it, it piles it up and then you're back to six, eight inches of snow in the neighborhood streets. But the more important issue in this that is really troubling to me is they focus on our primary streets and our major streets first. They push four lanes of snow into the side streets where all the residents live and then no one comes back right away and cleans those corners so they can get out onto the major road. We, we need to have a better plan. And when we can assemble all of our snowplow equipment on Friday, because we knew this event was coming on Wednesday, they started talking about it on Wednesday, they started really talking about it Thursday and then Friday. On Friday, if we can assemble every piece of snow removal equipment that we have in this city of Flint in one location and assign people to operate that equipment and have them come in when the department calls them because they're on standby, to come in and start to plow these roads in the city of Flint, the plan that Mr. Croft has put together doesn't work. And I've talked to Howard. You, you can't not address the neighborhoods. And to not address major streets, Atherton Road, Davison Road, Hemp Hill Road, Pearson Road, Clile Road, until later on in the afternoon, it creates a real problem for residents, particularly those that need dialysis or they need to get out for certain medical treatment and stuff like that. If, there's no excuse that we don't have money to buy equipment. No excuse whatsoever. There's no excuse that we don't have personnel because we have plenty of personnel in all the various departments that can assemble to address a, a snow event in the city of Flint. And, you know, I, I want a better plan and I want a better plan of action for this community. Because when I look at communities like in Boston where they're just getting hammered, New York, they have a plan put in place where they can address this relatively quick. And here we are in a community that we get these events every year and we can't address it from one year to the next. And I don't know if we don't have the, enough of the right equipment. I don't know the reason why we don't because we receive plenty of funding to buy that equipment. We can equip vehicles out of the water and sewer and lease them from them on a snow event instead of leasing them from a company in, in the thumb area with, that provide us with tractors. I don't, I don't know. I'm not a DPW expert, but I know that it's not rocket science to plow streets. I personally know that. And I know that we have to do our major streets and our primary roads and then our neighborhoods. I, I realize that. But, but we have to have a better plan of action than what we've demonstrated this last time. And if we have another major snow event larger than the one that we had, it affects our economy. It affects our schools. I mean, I looked at the, the news, Grand Blank had school in, in a rural community and the city of Flint couldn't have school because the buses couldn't get down the residential streets to pick the kids up. And there's no excuse for that in our community, none whatsoever. If, if this didn't happen on a regular basis and it was once every 10 years, I, I could maybe accept that. But, but we have this problem every year and we just need to have a better plan of action. And I would like at the Public Works Committee to have Howard present to the, to the committee a better plan than what we had last Monday when we didn't get out and start plowing the streets until 7:00 in the morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, we'll get that as a referral as a discussion item on Public Works. Councilman Mays quickly and then I've got something to say and then we're going to...
Okay, Mr. President, I would like to make a referral to the Legal Department, to the Police Department and to Maxine and the emergency manager to do all things necessary to be prepared Saturday, February the 14th, to support, if it's only one police personnel and car as it relates to that march. And I want that referral to go because, you know, when the people was in the dome, you had numerous police. At a council meeting, we have police personnel. And then this summer, when we did the March for Peace Against Violence from Pearson Road down to Burston, Captain Bernie was involved and we got within minutes a police escort and we peacefully marched from Pearson to Burston. And so, as we go through this form of government with emergency managers and as I hear this and you got an expert coming in willing to volunteer from Aaron Berkovich near and give free advice, and here we paying 900,000 or talking about it... And here we paying 900,000 or talking about it and putting out bids for requests, and we got experts coming in from across the nation who said they will consult. And I talked with Public Works, they say we'll listen to them. I want this thing to be a class thing. And so, believe me, I'll be there. And if I'm a part of it, then I'm putting in the request. That might hurt it, but I'll be there. And so, this is a class group and a class act. And so, Mr. Bate, believe me, I know that there's formal procedures and there's other things, but guess what? I witnessed for myself the ability for us to come together in a spur of the moment. And if it need be, I can tell you privately, I experienced this type of thing, and it worked well. So the referral I would like to make is to Mr. Bate's office, the Police Department, and Maxine. And then finally, Mr. President, I would say this. And I would like for somebody to notify me if and when everything seemed to be going all right, one way or another. Can I maybe find out something about Thursday or Friday? Because I don't want people, you know, in violation. So I'll still make that referral, and I'll be a contact person if need be and let the right people know. Then finally, Mr. President, I know USC 1983. That's a law called under the code.
I know, I'm just going to cut you. I'm going to cut you off right there.
No, don't do that, Mr. President, if I may.
Everybody go around, and I haven't had my opportunity yet.
Well, after you get your opportunity, all I want to do is ask Mr. Bate a legal question. So should I acquiesce and then ask Mr. Bate a question?
Well, I, I think that we've all had an opportunity to come through and speak. Some of us have had two opportunities to come through.
Two, but look at the business we taking care of. When it come to the water, Mr. President.
Mr. Mace, please.
So you won't let me finish this up? When it comes to the water, I really wanted to do this for the record. Mr. Bate represents the city.
Councilman, come on. Come on.
If you finish, Mr. President, if you see time before we adjourn, I do want to ask Mr. Bate a question as it relates to water.
Couple of housekeeping items that I want to deal with. I've, I think I've notified everybody about an ad hoc committee that I want to put together. I've talked with the Emergency Manager about it to deal with our rules. Our rules are, you know, state one thing as it relates to committees, and that's kind of changed now. And I think that we need to get those in line with the changes that we're making. So I've asked Councilwoman Mace to lead that effort. I'm going to do it, and I would like at least one other person to sit on that committee to do that. Also, with the new committee realignment, I think I put a memo in everybody's box this morning when I was down here. We've got, I'm going to remove myself from all of the, the committees that I serve on as long as I'm on council president. So that opens up a couple of things. And then if people want to move to different committees, if you can get that, those requests for specific committees to me, the chairs are going to remain this morning. But the specific requests, if you can get those to me by Friday so that we can make those appointments starting next, next week. I also requested at our Finance Committee meeting, and I heard from Councilwoman Poplar, Councilwoman Van Buren, and Councilman Davis about dates that you're available to do a budget workshop, which was a request out of that Finance Committee. But I haven't heard from everybody else on availability. Probably going to be too soon to do it this week, so we'll have to do it next week. But we need to get that rolling because we're going to start hitting budget time real quick here. And I believe, talking with the Emergency Manager, that he wants to bring in Dr. Scarsoni rather than the Michigan League because he's more intimate with our, with our, has more intimate knowledge of our budget. Media announcements, I was not notified either on that announcement that was at, I think it was at Hesselbrink.
Haskell.
Haskell. That was at Haskell. And I talked with the Emergency Manager after the fact, and I said, we need to get a heads up on this stuff. And that's one of the reasons that he was here today talking about tomorrow. It was also brought up about the $2 million that we're getting from the state. And that's going to go to two uses, the, two uses. The $900,000 that they spoke of is for leak detection in our system. So, you know, everybody's heard the reports that we're losing, you know, 20 to 40 percent of water. This is going to do a review or a survey or explore inside our pipes to see where those major leaks are so that they can prioritize where they're going to spend dollars to fix infrastructure. The remaining amount of that money is going towards the decommissioning of the sludge incinerator out at the sewer plant. So in that decommissioning, we're going to be able to realize some significant savings in natural gas prices or costs. I'm trying to think if there was anything else. Mace, if you can make it quick.
Okay. Mr. President? When you don't hear from me, that mean any day is fine that you come up with. So that's a standing order. When you don't hear from me and you're trying to put together a schedule, any day is fine. The other thing is this. Mr. Bate, just for the record, I know that you are a city attorney for the city of Flint. And I know that you are a city attorney for council, and you have a dual role, you, dual role. You're the city attorney for the administration. I know under Emergency Manager law that the Emergency Manager acts as the council and the mayor. I've never heard of such a thing in my life. So for the record, this is what I would say if you was acting on behalf of the city and the Emergency Manager was an officer or a contract employee of the state. And I know that the Court of Claims has jurisdiction. And I know that health and safety is a priority. I want to know if I made a referral to ask our city attorney on behalf of the citizens of the city of Flint to give me some legal research as it relates to if we came to this city with proof of illness and ailments backed up from doctors, what would our city attorney do or recommend legally as it relates to, until they get it fixed, we got a source? And I've jumped through hoops to prove that we got a source. And I know for a fact that people is meeting privately looking at injunctive relief in a court of proper jurisdiction, and that then got to a certain point. So I'm asking you on behalf of the citizens of the city of Flint, as the legal arm, before people go outside and maybe internally, and if we have to go in executive session with Mr. Ambrose, I'm willing to do it, but I'm very serious now because Mother Mace and the twins, who, their mama came to Antioch, and she put them in, you know, water, and I done got expert testimony about airborne pathogens and flying and THC. And I said, I done learned more about TTHMs and standards, drinking and bathing, than Forrest Gump and Bubba NIM had to learn about shrimp. So my question is, and I'm making a referral, and you don't have to ask me now, but I'm making a serious referral to the Legal Department to look at the possible health and safety issues if we have to go into executive session with Mr. Ambrose, Mr. President of the Council, Public Works, and even the consultants. Because we don't know how long it's going to take them, what they going to come up with, and what if they come up with something we don't want to hear? But right now, my responsibility is to the people. And so, whether you say anything or not, as the legal arm of this great city on behalf of the citizens, I'm making a referral to research it in some health and safety issues. Finance is secondary for me because I know what the finances look like. We just freed up $2 million, and I wouldn't care if we paid for one month or two months. So the referral is so made, and then I'll wait for some response, publicly, privately, or in executive session.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I, I can respond right now.
Do I respond, Rob?
Sure. Yeah, I, I don't represent the people of the city of Flint. And, and that's a mistake that, that's often made. I do not represent the people of the city of Flint. I represent the corporate entity, the city of Flint, the corporation. And so I don't accept referrals to, to, to provide legal advice or evaluate potential claims of citizens. That's not, it would be illegal for me to do that. My job is to represent the corporate entity. This is not a matter that can be discussed in executive session because there's not pending litigation against the city of Flint. Otherwise, any referral that you make under the current status of the city would need to go to the Emergency Manager first for him to make a decision on whether he wanted the Legal Department to take some action on it. But aside from that, you know, it's not my role to, to recommend, to evaluate, or to advise anyone other than the corporate entity of the city of Flint. And yes, city council's a part of that corporate, corporation, plays a role pursuant to charter, as does the mayor, as does the Emergency Manager pursuant to state statute. And, and in that rubric, I provide advice. As you say, sometimes, you know, you're, you're answering a lot of different folks, and at times I have to separate out, separate myself where there's a conflict. But that is, at this point, there is no conflict. The Emergency Manager hasn't directed that matter to this body. And I certainly, like I said, I can't represent individuals outside. It's not that I'm not sympathetic, it's that I, I can't do that.
Mr. President, if I may. So however you have just responded, let me make it clear then. I'm a part of that corporate entity. And I represent people, and I don't like the corporate entity to be liable if in fact somebody is making a boo-boo. So my referral remains that I'm asking you to look at it as a possible thing that we are providing water that might not be safe as a corporate entity. And if we find out down the road, from what I'm getting with legal documentation and others, that we might be liable, then I want to mitigate damages. So I want you to research it on my behalf as the corporate entity because I'm hearing over and over whether or not the decision-making and whether we might be found liable because the agent of the state and the governor might be liable. So as a member of that corporate entity, I, my referral stands, and I'll word it this way. I want to see privately, publicly, or possibly in an executive session because I know for a fact that there had been some litigation. Anderson Fernandez had filed some. And I know who was named in it, and I know it was in federal court. So I'm, my referral stands, and believe me, I'm very astute. So in hearing you, let's clear, make it clear. As a member of the corporate entity, with people who I have to represent who might bring some liability to us, and as a member of the corporate entity that I know we have a duty and a responsibility legally as it relates to people's health, safety, and welfare, then I'm asking for some feedback. Whether you want to do it again, I'll respond again. But I know that I have a proper referral to the Legal Department through you, to the Emergency Manager, or both. But I want some legal feedback, just as I've asked for financial feedback as it relates to this water issue and possible liability. So my referral is so made.
We got your referral, and we'll send that referral tomorrow.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn? It's been moved, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Can I get roll call, please?
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mace?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no to adjourn.